Yeah. More money from the state, whatever that means. Not a lot.
How much to grow by?
Six percent.
Three hundred.
Nice.
Is that right?
Quite a bit.
Yeah.
Six percent, uh...
Thirty eight hundred.
Thirty nine oh five times six percent.
No.
Hundred eighty.
Must be because of the affordable housing and the tolls, sir.
Is that on your side? Yeah. You know, some of the housing, some of that whole issue is, though, that, you know, people can move anywhere and work now, right? So why wouldn't we expect the cost of housing will be the same wherever you go? Because people are coming with the same amount of money.
No. The housing isn't as bad here as it is in a lot of other places. People just don't look around in other places to see what the prices are. So they think it's just high here.
You okay?
No. I'm saying I'm smelling in here.
I mean, I'm here today.
Wow, what does that mean?
Um, no, do you need some water?
I don't know, something's...
Did you need the Heimlich maneuver?
Not happy. What?
Do you need the Heimlich maneuver?
No.
No, if she can answer that question, she does not need it.
I do not. I'll be fine. There must be some, uh, something in the air. Then I'll go get my hand on it.
Do those work?
Yep, they do. If that's what I want to be doing.
Um, did he, did he forward you an email that he is excused tonight? He had mentioned it at the last meeting. And then Linda, are you available to come in and sign meeting minutes tomorrow precisely, specifically for the public hearing for the rec plan?
Sure, what time?
Anytime, I'll just put him up front with Hunter and get your stuff in.
Okay, sign me up, yeah. And I, I won't be at the next meeting.
Okay.
You won't be? You going far there?
Can I just sign in? Can I just talk?
That's not, that's not really an excused absence, then.
Can be any absence you wanted to be. Okay, we probably should, oh, no, it's not quite time to start.
Isn't Kay down there right now, or were they down there?
My cousin Kay, um, they were down there earlier. My sister's down there. And my other sister's coming down, and my brother's down there, ready to...
What about Sally?
Sally, yep, they'll be there, too.
Yeah.
We're all gonna like, probably.
Get together, huh?
Yeah.
Where do you go?
Uh, we have a place in Frontegorda.
Frontegorda? Oh, yeah. That's nice.
It is nice, haven't you met her?
From our vacation rental.
Yeah.
I have a friend that was there, too.
Put a boring, like, book library behind you on the green screen.
You know, uh, her maiden name was Gagnon, you know any Gagnons that... Lives in the township.
I should go.
She's older than you, so...
Minge is...
They lived on Granite, the end of Granite, we're down there by the, by the end.
Um, yeah, um, Mary Minge, Dave Minge's dad had them there, too.
Yeah.
And, um, that's where Jeremy has his parents live.
Yeah.
There's a lot of market people. Yeah.
Crystal River, too, that's a big hotspot for market.
It is, but...
Some look real appealing to me.
Crystal River?
Yeah.
Well, it's too far north, so it's cold.
It looks swampy and, you know, the pictures I've seen...
It is, by the big, tall one, too.
Yeah, it is.
But people liked it because it was less money.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a lot of people there. So, a lot of people rented, and then, I don't know, they didn't go back. Where you guys go?
Uh, the last couple times at Clearwater.
Oh, yeah, I gather, yeah. They're just so busy.
Yeah.
Yeah, Frontegorda is a quiet town, and it's kind of like, it's, it's like the...
Yeah.
Except there's people. Yeah, it's just a little tiny city.
Yeah.
Yeah, but right next door is, you know, well, I said, we fly into either Sarasota or Burbank. And it depends when you're flying. And if you can, you know what the places are.
Go in March or April, too, if we're, if we're retired, anyway.
We like to, well, if people allow us, we like to go in November, okay? Because, look, there's nobody there, and that's great.
We did that, too.
And then we went, um, then we go the last couple weeks of April into May, just that little tiny week, and then people leave and hopefully see, because, you know, they're all from New York. We got a lot of New Yorkers.
Yeah.
And Canadians, lots of Canadians. Yeah, hopefully I don't call, okay? I'll turn my lights off.
Okay, we can call the meeting to order for the, uh, March ninth, twenty twenty-two planning commission. And, uh... We don't need the, uh... Election of Officers on there again, do we?
Oh, my gosh, thank you.
You must not like us, too.
Yeah, I know, that's what I'm thinking.
Looking for a change out there.
Yeah. I mean, I can resign if you want to. All right, roll call.
Steve Akinen, Lake Enchantment.
Bethany Cody, Lake Enchantment.
Jim Johnson, White Oak Drive.
Linda Wenslow, Norwood Street.
Eric Power, Staff Planner.
Jason McCarthy, Planning and Zoning Administrator.
Approval of the agenda?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
In favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes from the previous meeting, February twenty-third, twenty twenty-two. Any changes or corrections? Did you see anything?
I move to approve the agenda.
Minutes?
Oh, excuse me, I move to approve the minutes from the previous meeting of February twenty-third, twenty twenty-two.
I'll second it.
All right, in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, um, now's the time for any public comment that we have right now, unless you want to wait to speak on the agenda items, but if there's anybody that'd like to speak now, come on up. Okay? Oh, sorry. I'll keep it going now.
Okay.
Um, all right, so let's go to new business. And, uh, special use public hearing. Uh, Jason?
Sure, so we've received a special use permit, uh, request for a rooftop solar system. Township is supportive of renewable energy, um, in all of our zoning districts, actually. But in the residential district, we do require a special use permit, actually, I think we require a special use permit in all districts, just to get a, a kind of a ascertain what's going on and see what's happening with, with that particular project. So we review these on an individual basis, and probably in a good case, and this one, this one's on an institutional, uh, type of structure. So what the Marquette Alternative High School is proposing to do is to put a rooftop solar system in, and if I could read directly from Mr. Prill, um, it says the installation of solar panels on the alternative high school rooftop should not have any foreseeable effect upon emergency services, sanitary sewer facilities, nor traffic volumes, obviously. Uh, it will have a profound impact on our school education system as we begin to deeply analyze how energy is produced. Hot topic right now, obviously. Uh, and what the costs of production are, students will get a real-time data, uh, among, about energy, uh, production via the sun through the school year. And then, um, it's specifically with regard to the project, um, they're looking to put in a twenty kilowatt system that allows the school to supplement their energy, um, move more towards sustainability with education, because it will also serve as an educational purpose where students can analyze the costs versus the benefits of solar energy with real-time data. So, from a zoning standpoint, um, staff supports it, obviously, and thinks it's a great thing, um, but we do review these, we have a public hearing, everybody within three hundred feet of the property's been notified, um, as with both public hearings tonight. And, um, I don't know, staff's excited about it, I think it's a great opportunity for, um, the community, a great opportunity for the township to promote the alternative high school and their endeavors, and, uh, staff supports the project, uh, but as this is a public hearing, any comment should be taken into consideration before the planning commission makes their determination. And I did include some, uh, just sorry, our little, our little Geek Squad pointer thing isn't working tonight, so we have to manually do something. Um, so here you have the, um, Alternative High School, here's Erie and West Fair, and they're proposing to put it on this section of the building. South-facing, I imagine. And that is kind of a, a picture that was pulled off the internet, but, but essentially a very similar-looking system. I'd be happy to answer any other questions I can, and then you have Brian Prill from the Alternative High School, who is here to also speak on behalf of the project.
All right, well, then let's, uh, open the, uh, public hearing at seven oh seven, uh, number zero three zero nine two two dash one. Proposed solar energy system for the Marquette Township zoning ordinance, project to be located at the Marquette Alternative High School, eleven seventy-five Erie Street in Marquette. Subject property is located within the urban residential zoning district of seven, section sixteen. Do we have anyone wishing to speak?
I just have one question about that. Is the VLP gonna provide a two-way meter for that silver color pack?
Uh, well, first of all, sir, would you be able to, uh, tell us your name and address?
Um, my name is Neil Nickenin, um, my address is one 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 Old Saloon Trail. Um, I'm basically here for another subject, but I just thought I would ask that question.
Okay. And we can answer that at the end of the public input here. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Hi, I'm Brian Prill, eight oh four seventh street. Uh, I'd say it's not gonna be that large, it's only a twenty kilowatt system, so we're probably like one of those large arrays there. And, uh, to answer your question, we, we will, we have an interchange, uh, agreement already with, uh, Borley Power, so...
I'm Robert Stone, I'm eight, eight ten, County Road five fifty. Um, I'm just curious, uh, what is, what percentage is that going to cover?
Sadly, not a whole bunch of it, yeah, we use on average three kilowatts, uh, per day, kilowatt hours per day. This is a twenty kilowatt system, so, um, it's supplemental right now to start, and hopefully if it's cost-effective, we'll grow the system maybe, but...
Do you have enough loose space to potentially cover your entire electrical needs?
We, uh, certainly do, yeah, we have that, we just don't know if the district will fund it or if we have the funding to support it at this point in time, so we're just starting out small, then if we want to add to it and develop a system for, we'll go to that point in time.
Interesting.
Okay, please.
So this is the first, um, venture into this for the Marquette area public schools, correct? So you will be a pilot?
Yeah, it's kind of getting big, see if it's effective or not. Uh, I think in our area, uh, we're, we underutilize solar energy, obviously, and we have fairly high costs for kilowatt hours. Probably go up with natural gas costs increasing in the coming future here, so it kind of makes sense. Sadly, the net metering program that Michigan used to have changed, the law changed in twenty sixteen, and, uh, it scales towards utilities, where you don't really get paid a fair exchange for the kilowatts you generate and put back into the grid. But it still has enough, hopefully have enough, uh, financial feasibility to pay the system off within twelve years, I guess, maybe. So it's gonna then generate free electricity, they'll load the building, the school district, and hopefully these, uh, these systems being installed across the district, so...
It'll be fun to watch.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, I mean, really, it brings...
And it's something we can, as a school, we can look at and see it, and look at the data, which is awesome, you know? It's one thing to look at data and study it, but when you're actually generating it right there, you can see it in action, it's a little more exciting, a little more real for the students, so...
Any, anyone else wishing to speak? All right, we'll close the public hearing at seven ten. And any questions or comments, commissioners? Yeah, I'm a big proponent of this, I think it's a great idea.
Is there any winter maintenance that you have to do, since it's up on the roof?
Yeah, we, so it's a pretty low roof, it's only, especially with the snow where it's at right now, it's, uh, five feet off the ground, basically, so I have a career in collaborating in this class at my, it's my shop class in the afternoon, and, uh, become part of our maintenance, where we go through in the daytime and brush it off, maybe. But they're pitched at an angle that's pretty steep for kind of hitting the apex of the sun, so ideally, on the, most days, the snow will kind of drift off of it on its own, but we'll, we'll perform maintenance at maybe, kind of do that in-house. Get right up there and monitor.
Let me be, you said this already, but will there be enough power coming from that for the whole school, or just a supplemental?
No, yeah, just a supplemental, yeah, just to start. Uh, to, to get a big, large-scale system, I don't remember the exact number, but, um, we had a financial, what is it, Sigma Capital Financial kind of looking at, and they're a solar company, kind of national, and they operate, um, pretty large-scale projects, and we gave us an estimate that would require, uh, I think it was like a hundred and fifty kilowatt system to support our school entirely. And, uh, twenty kilowatts for sixty thousand dollars, and we grow quite a bit to actually power the entire school that way, so, again, the idea is we, we start at twenty kilowatts, and if it pays itself off in twelve years, we do again, add another twenty kilowatts and slowly grow the system, so...
If there's any grants out there in the future that you'd like to partner on, uh, I believe, I can't speak for the township board, but from staff's perspective, we'd be happy to either partner with you or provide letters of support.
All right, excellent. Yeah, it's kind of our next step at discussion, permanently, is getting approval there, then the financing part, so we're hoping the school will, the school will pay for it and support it in-house entirely, but if not, we'll, we want to put into the grants and looking out there, see what's available.
Yeah, this is Christie Black from, um, The Mining Journal, uh, a loyal follower of township, uh, business, and I know that she was interested in the, in the, um, actually when we scheduled the public hearing, so funny enough, uh, most institutional buildings are flat-top roofed, so it makes a lot of sense, I mean, if you look at Germany, other countries that are along the same line of latitude, they're, you know, they're utilizing a lot of solar. So I'm happy to see that, and I hope that it catches on.
Just one question with, um, with your, obviously, you're trying to, uh, reduce your electric bill, do you coordinate that with a roadside management?
I don't know that needs a roadside management.
That would be like LED lighting?
So that's kind of the next part of it, I was just talking to my, um, building administrator about that, and as we get this system going, we'll start analyzing the energy use in the building and try and reduce costs. Um, we kind of talked about where the district could install timers in the classrooms and motion sensors to turn lights off if people want to use the room, so that's kind of a part of the project is to reduce our overall, uh, energy use, because...
As part of a project where we, um, went from fluorescent lighting to LED, all LED lighting voltage, it reduced the, uh, lighting bill by seventy percent.
Yeah, it'd be, so that's the kind of stuff we're looking to do, is just finding the funding for it, doing that, and the time to do this, so, yeah, the district, looking at their energy use, the energies across the district is like seven hundred thousand dollars a year, so there's a large possibility for savings there.
Any other questions?
I'll make a motion to support, um, the proposed solar energy system or top system at, um, the alternative school, at Bandenmoor. You can put all those things in there, just...
I'll second it.
Okay, any more discussion? Okay, we'll take a roll call to vote. Uh, Steve?
Uh, yes.
Bethany?
Yes.
Jim is a yes?
Linda's a yes.
Okay, motion passes unanimously. Great. Thank you very much, good luck with everything.
Thanks, guys, for the great proposal. Uh, Jim, we close the public hearing at seven fifteen?
I did already.
Okay. Sweet. Next item.
Okay.
Oh, you, I can push that.
Just the arrow button, yeah, sorry. Well, I'll order one, plus I saw that Eric doesn't have a name, technically. Calling you in here, here.
All right. Six B is a special use permit public hearing. Zero three zero nine two two dash two. Uh, Jason?
So, uh, as with all residential zoning districts in our, uh, in our community, we do allow by special use permit short-term rentals, which is considered to be less than thirty days. Um, if it is a structure where it is not owner-occupied, we do require a permit, uh, for that, and it's a special use permit. Um, if it's a structure that is lived in and then a room is rented out in it, um, then we don't require a permit even, because we figure our job is to protect general health, safety and welfare, and assuming that somebody's living there and renting out a room, um, you know, we don't, uh, require that. But if it's not being owner-occupied and it's being rented out the entire structure, we want to assure, um, folks that are visiting it, that it's been inspected, that they've received a permit, the fire department's been through it, they have adequate parking, and they are aware of general rules such as the noise ordinance, and any implications with regard to taxation, too. So if you, if that was a primary residence and you rented it out for more than fourteen days, you do lose that exemption. Uh, so we have received, uh, an application for the property located at eight twenty-eight County Road five fifty, it is in the Scenic Resource, uh, Scenic Residential District, one of our, uh, residential districts up on County Road five fifty, and detailing the, I guess, staff report. Get to that spot. All the neighbors have been notified, uh, we have a couple of adjacent property owners here tonight, and, let's see. Interestingly enough, um, on the west side of five fifty, it's Rural Residential, on the east side, it's Scenic Residential, to the south, it's Scenic Residential, and to the north, it's actually the, um, uh, the Marquette County, and it involves the new parking lot that they developed for Sugarloaf. So, uh, if you go one more, Jim, it zooms in a little bit more, so you can see it's a larger piece of property. And unfortunately, the applicant isn't here this evening, but they were made aware of this. This property line is a little bit skewed, this structure here came into play when the county was building, uh, the parking lot, but it, these lines, of course, are, um, uh, approximate, and so that's how approximate that line is, uh, it's a little bit skewed to the south there, so...
Where's the parking lot, Jason?
The parking lot is here now, right before the curb, it drops into here and it kind of loops around. Uh, this aerial image isn't recent enough to show that. Um, so it is fairly low density, um, and of course, you know, staff recommended approval, barring any, uh, comments that you need to take into consideration from property owners, I did include in the packet, um, an email from Mr. Stone, who is here, from eight ten County Road five fifty.
Which, which is where?
I believe to his south.
To the south?
Yeah, directly adjacent. A budding south.
Like here?
Yes, yes. And then the other gentleman is from the old saloon trail, is this, is this you back here, sir?
Um, it's kind of hard to see from here.
Oh, sure.
My property is adjacent to that property.
A budding or adjacent?
And mine, it abuts his and it abuts mine, so it's a...
Okay, so he's right here, then?
Yeah. I'm adjacent to both.
Um, and with that, I guess if you have any questions of staff, we'd be happy to answer them, otherwise, feel free to open the public hearing.
Well, now, now this, um...
Sir? Hold on, sir, you'll have your opportunity.
All right.
Yeah, I got, I got a couple questions if I might. So we always have this checklist right here, that I provided this, 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 and this, somebody checks it off, and then somebody from the township signs in and approves it, yada, yada, yada. So it asks for a drawing of a boundary survey of a parcel map, okay? That lists what the structures are on the map. I'd like some dimensions, maybe, that kind of stuff, you know, I mean, I mean, you know, I mean, if we're gonna do this kind of stuff, let's at least kind of try to follow what our checklist says. Okay, so, so which one's the house?
Well, the house would be, obviously, the longer rectangular, top to bottom.
Okay, and then there's a little building there, so this, this, this parcel has this building on it, even though the property line shows us not.
Right.
You understand what I'm saying, though? I mean, when you're asking for things and, you know, show, label things, I would expect them to be labeled, maybe. If you're gonna check it and say, yep, they did that, I mean, this is, this, we provided this, right? The, the applicant didn't, provided nothing, as far as I could tell, you provided this to them for this?
Yeah, and we often say, you know, in lieu of a plot plan, we're happy to provide you with a copy of the...
Okay.
...data from the Marquette County equalization parcel layer.
Okay, and it also says to show that the zoning districts on the map are superimposed on it somewhere, I mean, you gave us kind of like, over here, you kind of like a wave around kind of thing, so, you know, if you're gonna, if you're gonna request these things on here, put them on there. If you're not gonna want them, don't, don't put them on this checklist, because, you know, we're just wasting time there, right?
Thank you.
Okay.
Jason, is the applicant the owner of the parcel?
Um, as of now, they are, I believe, I don't think that the current tax layer, um, is updated yet, but I think it was a recent purchase. Eric, did it indicate that to you?
I do believe so, yes.
So, so, so that's saying, you're saying that Shannon Fisher does own the property?
That's what we were...
That's what you were told?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Why don't we, uh, open the public hearing right now, then, as long as we're kind of getting into this, at, uh, seven twenty-four for a special use permit public hearing for proposed short-term rental unit on a property located at eight twenty-eight County Road five fifty in Marquette, within the Scenic Residential Zoning District. The applicant is Shannon Fisher, one twenty-five East Crescent Street in Marquette. And if anyone's wishing to speak, if you could come up here to this, so we could get you kind of recorded on here and state your name and address, if you could, please?
Sure. Well, I'm Robert Stone, and I have the property right here, adjacent to this, and actually, this is wrong, because that building is on his property, and that parking lot abuts their property, it's right up next to it. So I wrote a letter to Jason, and I oppose this, and, uh, I oppose it for several reasons. One of them is it's gonna be unsupervised. You know, I've lived there since nineteen ninety-three, we've had a re, I'll say reasonable, quiet neighborhood right there, you know, it's woodland, and all my neighbors are good. And, uh, I don't want to have to deal with people next door that I don't know or trust, I just don't want to, and I don't want to be the one supervising it, having to call the cops at midnight or whatever, it's gonna be a temporary, whatever you call it, temp, temporary use, so people are gonna be in and out of there all the time, I'll never know who, who's there. I'm seventy years old, I don't want to listen to a party all the time. This area here is that big parking lot. I'm seventy years old. I don't want to listen to a party all the time. This area here is that big parking lot. That's two hundred and fifty yards approximately from my house, which is right there. Loud music all summer, any time of the day or night, usually at night. I can get up at four o'clock in the morning. I'm an early riser. There's headlights in that parking lot. I don't know who's over there. You know, it's a short walk across this lot, my yard. We've got the gravel pit here. We've got Lindberg's gravel pit there. I can hear their crushers constantly, you know, especially Lindberg. Now, Smith pretty much beat that one to death. But, uh, my bottom line is, and you've got a copy, I assume, of that email that I sent, is I just don't want that. I'd like to have a quiet, single-use family neighbor. That, that's it, you know? That's my bottom line. And I had two things that I didn't add to that letter that I sent to Mr. McCarthy. And one of them is, is this going to lower my tax base? Is my property tax is gonna go down because a business is next door? And what about setting a precedent? This property right here is, has been for sale. I, I don't know if it's been sold yet, but if they want to put a business there, these guys could put a business there. I'll be sandwiched in between a gravel pit and two businesses and a parking lot full of crazy people and something anyway. So I, I, I'm opposed to this, uh, strongly opposed to it, and I hope you can understand how I feel about it. Thank you.
So, uh, my name's Neil Nickenin, and, uh, my address is one 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 Old Saloon Trail. Let's see here if I can make out your map here, but, um, yeah, right here. Now, this would be my prop- piece of property right here. Uh, there's my house. This is my property line, which is adjacent to the proposed business. I'm not sure exactly what kind of a business it's gonna end up to be. Um, I do oppose it also. I didn't write a, uh, email to anybody yet, but, um, I bought that for a retirement lot after thirty-eight years of doing land work. I know Bill Jean over here, uh, Dr. Jean, he put a lot of effort into that subdivision and jumped through a lot of hoops to, uh, keep it as a, as a nice subdivision. And, uh, I believe, if I, if I'm understanding this, the original owner here, I believe, sold that place to somebody who wants to put in a bed and breakfast. And the reason, I believe, I talked to the owner when I was burning, brushing, clearing some of them red pines over there, the reason he sold it was, uh, because you put a parking lot in right next to him. So he, he was pretty upset with that parking lot that you approved in the first place. So that's the reason he sold it. So now, the next owner wants to make another step down for degrading the property, basically. And that's what it boils down to. Some of these decisions, um, devalue the property. Uh, but when I get my tax bill, it keeps going up. And when I point out instances of when my property's being devalued, it's an expensive subdivision, um, it doesn't seem to sink in. Being that I'm right here, all of these red pines were overgrown. I had a hundred and eighty cords taken out of there by Holly Logging. It was a big fire hazard. And this is all rock bluff. It's not buildable for any reason whatsoever. It's all rock bluff. So I had that taken out, uh, for a fire hazard and, and overgrown. And, uh, that was a hundred and eighty cords. I was paid like four thousand bucks by Holly Logging. I presented something to the commission there a year ago or so to, to compensate the tax evaluation, and it was, once again, it was ignored. Property value was removed from the trees. They were all number one red pines sent to the Sawyer Mill. And that was actual value removed from that property. And I presented all the paperwork for it. And that was, uh, what the answer to that was, uh, we feel that you made enough improvements the way it was, so they did nothing about it, and now I just got another tax increase. So basically, I got two tax increases. One was ignored, and now I got another one, uh, just recently. And now this here will devalue the property again, and I got another tax increase if it goes through. So that's why I basically planted some nicer trees in there, some, some, uh, mountain ash trees to replace them eventually. And then the other thing is for being, the, the value of this property keeps going up, but the blasting in the gravel pit continues. I got a thousand yards of concrete in my house that was a poured concrete, six-bag mix with rerod, and now my garage floor cracked. Uh, that last blast, which was maybe a couple months ago, um, shook the whole house. And I know others where the pitchers are falling off the walls. So, you know, devalued, it's supposed to be a scenic property for what? The gravel pit? You know, uh, this is devalued here. Property was removed from the original valuation, which wasn't accounted for, and now this is another devaluation here. Then the other thing is, if that's put in, uh, I'm afraid it's headed, headed towards Snuffy's Old Saloon again. You'll have a lot of drinking parties. I'll be picking up trash that blows in from the northwest here along my property line. That will be police. I'll be the policeman. And then this road is so curvy, you know, you're gonna have out-of-state people, uh, renting, having a party. I don't care what they do on their own time, but this is supposed to be a bicycle path right here, too. And this road, there's been so many accidents on this road here. And, um, I don't think, uh, inviting more partiers and unknown things in a residential area and a sub- right next to a subdivision is a good idea. So, basically, um, the other thing about this gravel pit, just so you guys are aware, we have like four hundred foot wells with a real low recovery, like, less than a gallon. And you're, you're, they're shaking and blasting. I mean, is there even a limit on how, how much, uh, dynamite they can put in there? And what's the effect on a well? And wells are like thirty, forty thousand dollar wells, all of them in here. And they had to be hydro-fractured to get water. So all of that's affecting everything here. And what I did, I, I tried to preserve this here, like Bill told me, well, maybe they won't put a gravel pit in there now. Well, probably not anymore, but, um, it should be taken seriously. I go on vacation in other places, and what I've noticed is, I'm glad to get back home because this is a real pristine area, real nice, beautiful area, and I'd like to keep it that way. I think it's a big attraction, uh, for, um, Marquette, basically. Other than this bicycle path is, if, if a guy wants to get a permit for something, there should be a bypass on there so you could actually, it's unsafe to ride a bike down that road right now. I would never ride a bicycle on there, so. That's my input, uh, so thank you for your time and listening.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to just add one thing about the blasting, 'cause I didn't mention it, but, yeah.
It's not relative, sir, to this application.
Could I, could I ask both of you? Sir, did you build your house after that gravel pit was there?
Yeah, Old Saloon Trail was developed in like two thousand...
So, so that was already blasting going on when you built? Is that correct?
I hadn't noticed any, any blasting, um...
But gravel pits are...
I heard the noise, but noise didn't really, you know, noise is noise, and it, and they shut it down. It wasn't the worst thing in the world, I guess, 'cause they did shut it down in the evening. And I understand that Eagle Mine probably needs concrete and gravel. But this last blast, I'm telling you, it shook my whole house. Uh, it, it's a hundred yards of concrete, and it took an awful huge blast to shake my house. And, and I never expected that.
Okay, did you have a comment then?
Uh, I just wanted to back him up on that, 'cause I'm actually closer to that gravel pit than he is. And I've got a log home. Walls are this thick and holding. House shakes when they let it go, you know? And I don't want to get into the gravel pit thing because I went through that a while ago, a long time ago, and it wasn't...
Okay. So anyone else wishing to speak at the public hearing right now? See no one else, we'll close the public hearing at seven thirty-six. And let's have some questions and comments. Steve?
Um, no, I'm good right now.
Bethany?
Um, just so we can kind of like recircle it and get back on what's the agenda items. So like the blasting aside.
Right.
It is just...
Short-term rental.
Short-term rental. Kind of considering like if it do values, other properties around it, or it's perfectly... They're allowed to apply for a short-term rental there, and we've approved other ones that have been in similar neighborhoods. There, there's...
Much higher density.
Right, okay. And as far as like policing it, short-term rentals have the same laws as everybody else. They have to abide parties, noise, same rules.
Correct.
Correct.
Yeah, special use permit, uh, can be revoked just as easily or difficulty as it can be provided.
If there's issues.
Correct.
Correct, okay.
Could I ask one question? Do I need to go up here?
It's up to the chair if he wants to recognize you. The public hearing's over.
Oh, I see, okay.
Yeah.
I, I was, I was just curious if there was a sunset clause on the short-term rental.
It's reviewed each year because a, uh, a license is required. So the fire department expects the structure to make sure it's sound the first year, and every two years after. Uh, a Marquette Township, uh, license is required every year, gets renewed. So if there's something that happens and then Mr. Stone comes in and says, you know, the sheriff's department's been out there three times, you know, that's cause to report back to the planning commission to say that we should review that one.
Is that the number? I mean, how many times do you gotta report?
Sir, I, I, I understand your, your, your concerns.
I don't want to be the one reporting to anybody. I live there.
Yeah.
It's my house.
Okay.
I will say that the concerns are speculative.
Who is, um, is Jade Ward the present owner then? 'Cause I'm looking on my map here, and that's what it says. Who owns the property right there? Do you, do you know what that...
That's what the, yeah, that's what the parcel layer says, but there's transactions that happen throughout the year, and they don't usually catch up until the next year, so.
Right.
Um, the woman who submitted it, if you read through your packet, it says eight twenty-eight. Uh, her letter says Shannon Fisher, owner.
Okay.
And if you'd like, we can read her letter into the record, which may, um, you know, I don't know how, I wish she would have, the applicant would, would have been here to speak to the concerns. However, just like everywhere else in the township, you know, we have quiet hours from ten to seven. We have a nuisance ordinance. We have other things that we rely on to control, I guess, the partying aspect of it, so. I, I, I don't... Th- this is up to the planning commission, but it's my opinion that some of the comments that are made are just, um, speculative.
Linda, any comments or questions?
No, no, other than I feel that if people are applying for something, it's their responsibility to either be here or send a representative. That's just my opinion. I think that shows, um, due diligence in, um, their intent to be, um, who they, what they say they're...
I agree with that. If it's important enough to them to do it.
Yeah, if it's important enough that you want to do something, no matter what it is, it is your responsibility to appear or send a representative.
But it's not required.
It is not required. And the other thing I would say is, we, um, alert the people within three hundred feet because we want to hear their opinion, and if their opinion, um, is stated and we, um, take that into consideration, that's why they're alerted. And we, yeah, we, okay. This is not gonna get easier. This whole short-term rental thing is not gonna get easier. We probably are, you know?
Well, my, my opinion on short-term rentals is, you know, you, you ask them for what they think about having a short-term rental in the area, and to me, I have to take that into consideration as to whether we approve that or not. And if you have neighbors here that don't like it, and the applicant doesn't even come here, like you said, you know, I have, I have a problem with that also. So, and it was the same thing with the last one, and, um, you know, I guess with these short-term rentals is, I kind of go by what the neighbors think, and if the neighbors don't want one in there, then that's gonna have a lot to do with how I vote on it.
Yeah, just for your guys' information, the, the planning commission has the ability to approve, deny, or approve with conditions any special use. They're called conditional uses, special uses. They're considered to be land uses that could be acceptable provided a public hearing occurs and that, uh, you know, and it's not gonna make everybody happy, obviously. But if, you know, the planning commission's concerned, or, or their charge is to ascertain which comments are relevant and which ones are speculative and et cetera. So, but, uh, you know, Mr. Stone went through the time to, you know, submit some thought out, and we did meet in person, uh, last week. And I said it would be best to submit that in writing. You can tell me, but I would, I would just read into the, you know, into the, uh, record what he indicated, but that's written in the packet, so that's actually public information now. But I agree, it's tough when the other person's not here to say, well, yeah, we're not gonna rent to, uh, snowmobilers, you know? We're not gonna, we're, we're, we're rent to only, you know, solid sport users and people that are gonna be in bed by ten and eat granola, you know?
They're not here.
I get it, but they're not here to, to, uh, to defend themselves. So the way that the ordinance is written, if it's denied, they have to wait one year, uh, to come back and apply for it, if they choose to do so.
With this last, um, one that we voted no on because the person wasn't here for that, did you ever hear from them?
Uh, we had Eric sent off the recorded decision, and I think we explained that, you know, in a roundabout way, that attendance would have been helpful. But, you know, we don't approve everyone. That's great. It's great that you don't, uh, agree on everything and just greenlight everything too. Much to the, you know, contrary of, you know, the, the county parking lot was a serious need for safety, so, you know.
So you didn't hear from that person, Eric?
Like as far as an appeal?
Did he just call or, or no, no communication at all? You sent it off and he...
Whenever the meeting, when we have an applicant on the agenda, we CC them the same way we do on Fridays with you. We provide the information, the meeting time, the date, location, um, and it's up to them. And I always highly encourage, and I've asked Eric to do that too, if I haven't... And I always highly encourage, and I've asked Eric to do that too, and if I haven't, I'm doing it right now, to always encourage the applicant to be present.
Well, my question, I'm sorry, must have been, my question was the one we denied last time, and he got his information that it was denied. Did he come back at all with anything or not? You haven't heard?
Not to my.
No, you haven't heard from him, right? That's what we're wondering, right, Bethany?
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh, yes.
Jim, okay.
Yes.
Well, you're kind of close.
I'm not, Bethany.
No, you don't even look like her. Okay.
So you, you just sent a letter to him and then that was it, and he never called?
Were required to provide a recorded decision.
Right, right, but he never called once he got the?
We did, we did have some, I think, in the couple of days after the meeting, before I had the chance to send that official record of decision, which looks much like one of your staff reports in your packet. Um, so before I had the, the chance to send that formal document, I mean, there was some informal kind of back and forth as to how, it was, obviously, it was denied, and I kind of informed him how the meeting went. Uh, but beyond that, no, no, no.
Okay, so you did speak to him in person then? On the phone? On the phone?
He's in Chicago though.
Yep.
All right.
And he's aware, he's aware that he can come back before the commission in a year's time to reapply if he wishes to do so, so.
Did he have any reason why he wasn't at the meeting or?
Because he's, he lives out of the area, he's a Northern student, I think he was, um, home for some reason or another and couldn't make it up.
Just taking care of his grandfather, I believe, in Chicago.
Well, anyways.
Yeah, that makes.
Okay, all right.
What year is that house? Because that last one we were talking about, it was an older home, and there was different concerns too, that they might not own the property.
Yeah, that's really a building codes, uh, question, I'm not sure what the year is, other than.
But it's been lived in this whole time by that other lady? Yeah, we don't know any background.
Yes, there, what, there has been some. I'm sorry?
I could answer that question.
Correct.
Yeah, I've been there since ninety-three, the original owner was Paul Johnson. And he passed away and, uh, his wife had the house for a while. And then she ended up in a nursing home and it sat vacant for about, I'd say, two or three years. And it's a modular home. And then Dave Borg and Jade, whatever her last name is, it's in her name now, or was, they bought it. And I guess there was a lot of mold problems in it, because it's sad, that's hearsay, I don't know that, I've never been in there. But anyway, uh, then they had that parking lot put in, and he was wild, he just couldn't believe it, you know? So it went up for sale for a long time, and the price, the value of it, just skyrocketed, right? I think Johnson might have paid sixty-five thousand for that way back when.
All of your property values are astronomical right now.
Yeah, well, it went to two ninety-nine on market, and then I think they sold it for two sixty-five. But it's a modular home, but he does have two nice big buildings on there. I don't know. I just want a nice neighbor.
Steve, any more comments? Entertain a motion here if anyone wants to make one.
Well, I'll make a motion that we deny the request.
Anyone support? No support, I guess. Anyone else want to make a motion?
I don't think you can let it sit, can you? Jason?
I'm sorry?
You can't just let it sit.
Well, if there's no support, the motion dies, right?
Know what she's talking about.
Yeah, I get that part, but can we just not make a motion and not do anything and just?
No, I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion that the proposed short-term rental unit on property located on eight twenty-eight County Road, five fifty Marquette, Michigan four nine nine, within a seating residential district, be approved.
I'll support it.
Okay. Open for discussion. We no discussion, we'll call the question with the roll call vote, Steve Hakenin?
Yes.
Bethany Cody?
Yes.
Jim Johnson's a no.
Linda Wenzel's a no. So it dies because?
Yeah.
Yeah. The tie.
So it fails, either way. Okay. There you go, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
That doesn't mean they're not going to rent it.
Well, I don't, you know.
You know that though, right?
You know, like you said, it's speculative on a lot of those things that I wrote, but it's also speculative that it could go the other way. What are you going to say? I mean, ruled in the, on the side of the people that are there, are there.
So, so short-term rentals are two weeks or less?
Right, so, yeah, they could rent it.
And long-term rentals are a month or more, or two weeks or?
Yeah, there's no requirements on behalf of the township to rent, uh, thirty days or more, so.
So, just out of curiosity, off the record, or whatever.
Well, it's all on the record.
On the record, then, who do I call if I've got somebody snowmobiling across my front lot?
Well, the sheriff's department.
Yeah, I know, I'm familiar with that, and I don't want to get back into that, because, you know, with the gravel pit, I have a lot of problems.
Yeah, that was before my time, as I understand, so, uh, I'm happy to answer anything for you or to address any concerns that you have as, as a resident of Marquette Township.
Try, I'll be civil about it. I'll tell you all my neighbor, oh, besides Neo, I talked to the neighbor across the street through Maryland, they don't want it, and I'm surprised they're not here. So, I mean, that's hearsay too, that's a fact.
Well, democracy is, uh, is a participatory sport.
Appreciate it, you too.
If it matters, all of my neighbors usually agree with what I have to say, which is Dr. Gene and Aggerlees and, and Tim Scholander, state trooper.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, thanks for coming, because, yeah, really. We're really nice. The last people that came too thought we were, like, they were afraid to come, I'm thinking. We're just like you.
Yeah.
Just trying to do the best we can.
Well, you live with Dave, you gotta be nice.
I'll tell him that. As I said, he went to, I said he'd go Florida.
That's on the record too.
Really great, who do they listen to these, my sister-in-law?
All right.
Excuse me, before we progress on, since we had a tie vote, what is the, what is the ruling here?
I believe it's a fail on both ends.
Something can apply again?
No, it's a denial.
A tie is a denial?
I believe.
Well, it didn't pass, so if, if you don't, if.
It wasn't turned down either, no, was it?
No, but it didn't, the, the motion didn't pass, I guess.
The motion to deny failed, and the motion to support failed.
Okay.
So in my.
So could they come back in a month and try to get a five-person panel here and see how it went?
Uh, Denny would have been the swing vote. The other thing you could have done is tabled it to another meeting.
Okay.
And then we would have had to re, and then we would have had the room filled. So, uh, I don't want to.
I, I want to say a, a couple of things here. First of all, we have two next-door neighbors, and there are three people that are living out there, these, these two folks in that parcel there. The one we decided last weekend was in lots that were fifty-foot wide, fifty-foot wide lots. How many people lived in that three-hundred-foot radius of that parcel? Got any idea?
Off the top of my head, no, but I believe it was something like thirty properties.
Thirty, so we had two people here bitching, excuse my language, and we turned it down because of that.
But they own.
And the other twenty-eight didn't care. So two people, two people didn't like it. One guy had a, was, had a, had a burr up his butt, because he couldn't drive across some easement without having a sign put there. I think that's what his big issue was. And the other guy was an electrician and he didn't think it was a safe place. So I, I, again, I'm saying that twenty-eight people didn't, didn't have a problem with it, two people did, and we turned it down. I, I, I don't think that's right. I don't think that's right, because, you know, if you don't want to look somebody in the eye and say, yeah, I'm voting for that, and I don't think what you're saying, I don't, it doesn't, it doesn't cause me to vote no for it. I think that's a problem.
This was one, I mean, from staff's perspective, I guess I can't speak for Eric, but the density, the size of the property, and the far, the fact that it was set back so far, the fact that it was county property to the north, um, they could have tied a little trail into the parking lot.
He could have said that he's worried about psycho killers moving in too, but that doesn't make it so.
I always say.
I mean, all he had was the worst-case scenarios on every one of these things.
McDonald's.
And they were both pissed off because of the blasting.
Yeah.
Yeah, I like up here.
You know, so I mean, you know.
It's still.
I mean, I, I, I'm a firm believer in property rights. And if I have some property, I mean, there's going to be a darn good reason why I'm not getting something, because I, you don't want to look somebody in the eye and say, no, yes, I'm going to approve it. I, I got a problem with that. I don't think that's the way this, this board should operate.
Well, there are checks and balances, right?
There are checks and balances, but I think the rationality sometimes, if somebody says, no, I'm voting no, I don't think that's a legitimate reason to vote no. I mean, unless you concur that, yeah, this is, this is horrible. But I mean, have we had problems with short-term rentals in this township? We have some here. Are they going wild having parties, racing around, swearing, and, you know, all this kind of stuff? So, I mean, you know.
I don't think we know that, Steve.
Have you had complaints, Jason?
I, I think the police.
So we, I guess we do know that as a township.
Well, I think the police will get the report, the, the.
Have we had complaints?
Well, I guess we can look at the police logs in the township board.
That'd be a great idea, why don't we do that?
Yeah, and, and you know, I, I believe if we have people coming here.
Yeah.
That we need to listen to them, and I also believe.
I, I'm not saying we don't listen to them.
Right, but I also.
But I'm saying that if there's thirty or forty people that have an interest in that, and twenty-eight of them don't care, and two do, we turn it down?
No, I think I turned it down because the person who asked for it didn't even show up.
And that's, and that's a rationale, because you, you think they should be required to be here?
I think they should, I think.
But are they required to be here, Jason?
No.
Didn't he have a good legitimate reason? He was taking care of his sick grandfather, so you punished him for that?
No, that's the last time.
Yes.
Well, I don't know that you know those.
That's what Jason just said.
Okay, Steve.
Well, I don't know.
I'm just, I'm just saying, we're very careful with this stuff. I'm a firm believer in private property rights.
Okay, let's.
Firm believer.
Let's have a civil discussion here.
And it's okay to do that, you know, we're not, we're, you know, we all have our opinions.
I think rational, rational, logical arguments are, are one thing.
Well, then maybe it's time that we sit down and make some real rules about rentals, short-term rentals.
We have rules, that's what we're doing now.
I don't think we have anything.
What?
I think we need to say what needs to happen. And I, and I think that.
Like what?
Well, do we want them in our neighborhoods where the density of populations are? Do we want them?
Well, then we'd have to change our ordinance, because that was put into our ordinance, right? That was a discussion, it was put into our ordinance, so now we want to discuss it to take it out?
Who put, who did that? Who wrote the ordinance?
Put that ordinance in there, Jason, was it the planning commission?
Yes.
Okay, we're on the planning.
Bethany and I weren't on that.
Then we should get it out of there.
No, Steve, you're not listening to what I'm saying.
Okay, what are you saying?
I'm saying that we maybe need to tighten up our rules as people start. Well, let's look at them, I don't know. Bethany doesn't know either.
Maybe we should loosen up our rules.
Maybe we should.
Okay.
So, but you have to look at those things, I, I voted how I felt was right.
I agree.
And you voted how you felt was right.
I understand that.
It's all okay.
No, it's not okay, because I think the last one, I think that was not the right thing to do. Firstly, I think that was wrong.
Not.
To consider two people who are complaining about something that didn't even make any sense to me, and there are twenty-eight people that live in that area that didn't have a problem with it. I think that's not correct. I think people should have the rights to their property within reason.
So you're talking about the last one, not this one? Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
That was like, and, and I.
And this one too.
Yeah, well, well, that's how I feel. I feel if people can make an effort to come here and, and they voice the opinion.
Because they came here. What if nobody came here?
Then we would have a discussion, wouldn't we? And if nobody had any interest into how it went, maybe we would have voted differently. But Jim and, I think, Jim and I both said, we felt if people didn't want that to happen in their neighborhoods, it's kind of like the junk car ordinance.
So where do you think you're going to get a hundred percent concurrence on anything, anywhere?
Well, it, it's not just about the hundred percent, it's the immediate neighbors for this one on each side of them.
That are at least three hundred feet away.
But to me.
A football field away.
To me, I thought that was a reason to not let him do that.
Okay.
Yeah.
And because whoever the person was, whatever the name was, didn't have.
And we don't know why.
Well, then maybe something, maybe we should say that they need to be required at these, can we do that?
That they're required to attend?
Yeah.
I'd have to check with legal on that one.
I guess I'd like to do that, so that if whoever that was for tonight, if she would have been here, we could have had questions answered.
Yeah, and we'd probably be here till nine o'clock with that one, because it would have just been back and forth. I, I thought the woman wrote, if, I wish it kind of would have gotten written into the record, but I thought she wrote a pretty nice narrative about her intentions.
I haven't seen that.
It's in your packet.
I just looked, I tried looking through there again.
I'm going to start delivering it to you, so you don't have to look through your phone while we're conducting a meeting.
But I didn't see it either, Jim.
It's in your packet. Right after the application, I include the narrative.
You know, one of my, what swayed me a little bit was that he had said that the neighbor who owned the house got out of there because of the parking lot. Like, it was no longer good for residential, full-time residential, so I thought this would have been the best use for that property. I just wanted to, you know, give you guys my perspective of, you know, why, I looked at this property separate than the last property.
You guys got to read this stuff. And try to keep it as minimal as possible, include the information that we believe is required of you to make a determination. I understand how, you know, the city of Marquette probably has a two-hundred-page packet, which, or God forbid, you, you read a piece of legislation at Congress level or something, which they just go and vote on something, it's like this thing. But don't get too bent up about these short-term rentals, because it is a conflicting issue across the board, everywhere. Because you look at a little community like Autrain, people have been living there for thirty years, all of a sudden, every other home in their commute, in their block is a short-term rental. You know, there's two arguments to it. Yeah, there's the partying group and, you know, everything's going haywire, but there's also people that have been renting out these homes, having great success with tenants. There's that two-way review with, on, on, on Airbnb. Eric's going to go to Florida next week, he's staying in an Airbnb. If he's a, you know, anything less than, uh, complimentary, he's going to get a poor review, and he's not going to be able to rent somewhere else. And it works the same way if you're, uh, the host too. But the other side of it is that people are buying these places, they're generating some income from them.
But I didn't see, I didn't know it was from her.
And they're, and they're also improving the properties by adding value back to them, they're fixing them up. You know, putting an extra garage or what have you, improving the value. I'm not sure what the gentleman was talking about is taxes, I know that I just received an assessment, uh, recently, that it said my, this is not a tax bill, says it right on the top. Says this just to let you know that you're, we've been revalued and that my value went up. It wasn't a tax bill at all. So.
People do not understand the whole taxing system.
Well, and I wasn't going to jump all over your planning commission meeting to.
Yeah.
You know, bust that out on him, but I, I know what he got, and it was an assessment, and it was an increase in his value.
Anyways, so it is what it is, we're moving on.
Yeah, that's, you're not always going to agree on everything, and that's fine. I will concur with Roger tomorrow, or I will just look up at some point tonight, after I have a cocktail, um, what the, uh, Robert's rules are on, um, a split vote like that. I, I believe it's a motion to fail, it's always seem, it seems negative, it probably is negative.
That's why the Senate likes.
Yeah, no filibuster, and no swing vote.
Yeah, if, if the motion to support it didn't pass, then.
It fails.
Yeah.
Correct. But, yeah, it's, it's logical sense.
So if we would have, if we would have voted on her proposal to, or her, uh, motion to, no, her motion to.
Right, if I would have submitted it.
If I would have said yes and yes, it would have been approved? Because we defeated that motion?
Her motion was to.
Deny.
Deny.
Okay, and if it would have been a two-two vote, then it would have been approved?
No, it would have failed.
No.
So each one fails then, if approved or denied, they both fail.
Correct.
Right.
Unless you would have had a.
We need our fifth person.
Well, or unless one of you would have voted differently. You could have had a, you could have had a firm denial or a firm approval with your group today, but it didn't happen. And that's okay, there's a first for everything. It's the first time I ever seen it.
Seen what, a tie?
Um, a tie, a tie that fails, yeah.
Ties can't pass or fail, they just.
They just die.
They die? They die?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's just, it's it's not favorable to the applicant.
Learning so much.
It's a good position to be in, right? I mean, we're just going to all learn from it.
No.
And maybe they'll come back in a year.
Well, the ordinance also says if there's other, any other evidence that the planning commission would consider to approve it, they can come back. So special use permits to.
So you said you'd consider approving it if she comes.
I do, I have to hear what she wants to say.
Well, I don't think that would be enough. Um, an application for a special use permit which has been denied wholly or in part by the planning commission shall not be resubmitted until one year or more, or one year or more has expired from the date of such denial, except on the grounds of newly discovered evidence or proof of changed conditions sufficient to justify reconsideration by the township. Seventeen oh seven, sub G.
I'm sure not forget the first group that's gone through this, so I'm sure there's something out there in the attorney world or something. Yeah.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Yeah, short-term rentals are still hot ticket items, and there's lots of controversy.
I kind of wish the legislation would just be approved, because it would make my life and Eric's life so much easier.
Yeah, but more people will be in there.
Would they? I mean.
Some people will be in.
You know, like, like Steve said, we don't get complaints on short-term rentals. And the first person, the first place you should complain if you do have a problem is us, because we're the ones that issue the permit. Right?
People just complain.
Well, you hear it?
No, I mean, no, in general, people just.
Don't say that, because that's not, I, to me, it's not, it's not accurate.
That they aren't, no, people just complain about stuff, not about short-term rentals. They just complain.
Yeah.
To each other.
I'm sure Jim can attest, because I know my dad ran ran a business, and he said, if you upset somebody on a, you know, a business transaction, they're going to tell ten people about it. If you do a great job, they might tell three people about it, because that's what you're supposed to do. Right? So Jim, you know, he has a group that comes in, has a bad meal, they go, ah, awesome, blah, blah, blah.
All over Facebook.
Right.
Well.
Different than it used to be, right, Jim?
I I guess to me, the way I think about this is, I've I've never really been in favor of this short-term rental period, just because why have zoning laws if, you know, you're going to have something be residential, and then you open it up and it's going to be like a multifamily or, you know, rental there? You know, when you buy a house in a residential section or zone section, you know, you you buy it because you don't want to be your own renters. And that's kind of why I have a problem with the whole thing about it. And that's why I, if people do have a problem with it, I guess I kind of side with them about it.
Well, you're more than happy to direct staff to remove the language from the ordinance, if you'd like, if that was supported, and it would make our lives a lot easier, because you could say, we don't allow. And the ones that have been approved are grandfathered, they transfer with the property, they don't transfer with the individual. And we drew a line in the sand and said we're done with it. But I don't think we're being overrun with short-term rentals. Eric documented for you maybe a dozen, and a couple of that have been denied. I thought the the one that really surprised me was the one on South Vandenboom. A couple of years ago, the ones that bought the home, put all the money into it, and came and got denied, because the neighbors were just, again, they were speculative comments. It's like, I always say this, but it's like McDonald's making a billboard of somebody choking on a hamburger, you know, it's just, they don't do that, because that's not, most people do, they enjoy the hamburger. It's a terrible analogy, but I love it.
I don't, you know, I I'm not speaking for the planning commission, I'm just speaking for myself, you know, I I don't think, you know, by the way, Steve Stone, he would want to get rid of that, you know.
Well, that's, you're a body of five people, and you have a vote. And sometimes you're not always going to be the vote that you want. But I will say that once a vote is made, that you should, as a group, support that. And that goes for the township board, too. I've seen that before in other communities where, you know, they'll make a vote, and then they'll backstab, you know, your other commissioners or your other, you know.
Your colleagues.
Board members or colleagues. And once a decision's made, you just say, that's the decision that this body made.
I agree. You know, and when when you talk about property rights, you know, you, yeah, property property rights up to a limit. And the property I own in town, the restaurant, city's telling me, you know, two hundred thousand things about what I have to do with it, what I can't do with it. And, you know, I don't have property rights there, and I I know for your own, for your own house, you should have more. He thinks you should have a lot of rights, and, you know, you should, but there's still zoning laws and, you know, if you're in a residential.
The analogy is incorrect. The analogy would be if your neighbor across the street started complaining about something you were doing, and they shut you down. Because they didn't like you.
Oh, well, that's happened. I hate to tell you, but that's happened many times. Not shut me down, but where I've had a lot of issues. I have a great, great neighbor.
I can see Eric's thinking the way I am, too, and he's reading or reviewing the review criteria for a special use permit. You guys need to take that into consideration, too. That's why it gets put in your staff report every time. It's not like we just say, ah, here's a special use permit, go for it. We try to lead you to review things in a kind of analytical way. And I believe, you know, you're, now we have to let this person know that, you know, the motion failed, two motions failed, and as such, and by the rules that we follow, their application was denied. As opposed to, you know, this application was denied based on the following comments that were made by, you know. There's those two, but you guys have to have a solid reason to deny something, I think. And you have the testimony basically by the neighbors, which I agree with. Go ahead.
And I, to take that a little further, like, those reasons would need to fall under one of these general use standards, section seventeen point zero six. The reason to approve or deny need to be relevant to those sections. That section, I should say.
So, in other words, on special use permits now, from now on, what we're going to do is if you make a motion to deny or approve, perhaps reference that section, or that I believe that this has been met.
Only if you're denying it, you're saying, oh.
Right. And perhaps staff can assist by reading those out loud. I know that other communities, they read those things out loud before they make their decision. So that everybody kind of gets in the same mindset about what they're deciding on.
Are there any more applications?
Comment?
No. So, yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll start, we'll sharpen up a little bit on what we provide. Um, I know that we've done that in the past, where, you know, we give you the list of the people that were notified by address and name. We'll also give you the map that shows the three-hundred-foot boundary. And we'll also make sure that we review those checkboxes to make sure that those things are provided. Now, if, you know, you might see in there that I write in there that, you know, the plot plan was provided by, you know, it's been provided, but staff provided that on behalf of the applicant. It's just, we do try to assist people. We're not making them go find everything at, you know, county registered deeds and stuff. We have the technology to assist them.
Correspondence?
Not at this time.
We have, gosh, business.
Township board report, Linda?
Okay, so a couple of things. The Marquette Township Board met, and there was some discussion on charter, have some information out there on affordability programs and plans and assistance for people who are not able to afford internet. So check out their website if you're interested in any of that. We did consider the adoption of that township recreation plan, and that did pass. So they also appointed to the DDA a gentleman named Bill Geller to complete a term that expires on twelve thirty-one, two thousand twenty-three. And we did schedule a work session to discuss township events. And that workshop was held, that work session, I'm sorry, was held on March seventh, and we discussed what events we would be holding this year, and we had budgeted it for what we felt were three events. And those three events will be the, three, I'll call them signature events. One is the car show, one is the event at Lyons Field in August, and the other is the Christmas tree event. The event committee was wanting to do more events, but the board, we did not vote, because it was a work session, but we all felt we needed to stick with our three events. So you should see information about those. And that's pretty much it. Any questions? Jason, did I miss anything?
He's not here.
I didn't miss anything, though. Did I? No, Eric doesn't. Yeah, so, yeah, the the recreation plan, you, the planning commission was mentioned. The swimming pool idea was mentioned. So, yeah, no one said, oh, no, we're not doing that. You know, I think, I think all those things should be on the table.
Okay.
And I think I did say we're getting some extra money from the government, because our population increased.
All right.
Yeah, so that's always good.
Recreation committee report?
I guess I'll jump ahead, if you don't mind, to the road committee report, which, really, nothing substantial to report. I mean, this time of year, with snow still on the ground, we we will be doing those, the Pazer ratings come, come warmer weather. And that's driving around in a township car and giving, giving the roads a one through ten rating to get that inventory done, and then from there prioritize which ones need. And obviously, we've worked with the county road commission on this, which which of those roads need improvements, and so on and so forth. So again, kind of, for lack of a better term, dead period of the year. Uh, we did discuss a couple of street lighting issues. I've brought it up to this group before regarding snowbanks and kind of clear-sight intersections, trimming trees around streetlights. So not that those are minor things, but compared to road maintenance, a little bit more of the secondary, minor issues that we've been discussing recently, so.
Oh, the rec committee, rec committee probably won't meet until next month. So essentially, on my plate, finished up the recreation plan, getting it submitted to the state, and then we have three weeks to basically put together the acquisition grant that has to be completed before April one. So I will update the rec committee via email and probably hold them off until April for a meeting, just so we have time to get everything done that we need to get done. I know Eric's been working on, and I guess just jumping into the planning and zoning report, which this is also part of. Eric's going to be reissuing a second round of business license applications. I believe there's sixty that have not been resubmitted, so those need to go out. And there are, we continue discussions on the the housing task force. Had a meeting last week on that, which was interesting. Jump in my notepad, I guess it'd be the best place for me to be. Again, working on a couple of larger residential developments. There's been some back and forth, perhaps a four-twenty-five agreement between the city and the township for one of the components of the project. So I've been reviewing four-twenty-five language again, because it's been a while since I looked at that. That is an intergovernmental agreement, basically, to perform zoning on behalf of the city. However, the city would gain the taxable value, of course, of what is developed out there. The golf course was approved, of course, as you know. There's been interest in developing a couple of ice rinks, like, to replace lake views essentially, in Marquette Township. So that has been a behind-the-scenes discussion that's been going on. Yeah, lots of stuff.
What about the Olive Garden? Is that coming in then?
Olive Garden, no, but I do expect to see a site plan on the other restaurants that that's.
Wait, Stone Island yet?
Sometime later this month. I know that they have a time contingency on it, and so I I did speak to Mr. Kerman's broker, and he indicated to me that he was a little bit frustrated on the civil side, because he thought the site plan would be ready already.
What about the credit union that was going to build and then backed out? We haven't forgotten.
I got a real estate inquiry today from a woman at RE/MAX who is thinking about listing the property. So I don't think that that's moving forward.
And nothing about the township property being sold or?
No. Has the township board decided to do anything with that?
Uh, they're supposedly selling it. Um, check one, um, down, because I thought we talked about it.
Okay.
Maybe I, maybe I misheard. But, yeah.
Has the board reviewed a purchase agreement? Or an offer?
Nope.
No, okay.
But I think the direction was to move forward to sell it.
Oh, I know, we're going to sell it. I thought you were indicating that somebody's going to buy it. Okay.
Not me.
Okay. Yeah, hopefully it does. I mean, you know, let's get it going. And then just day-to-day questions that come up, whether it's a garage or a fence, or somebody complaining, or, you know.
Yeah, those seem, not to belabor the point, but as far as kind of residential garage and deck and accessory structure inquiries, rented, home renovations, those are starting to pick up again.
Yeah.
With the, with the warmer weather coming.
Trying to line up contractors, and we got the short development season. So, yeah, it starts to pick up.
I think, I think it might be hard to find a contractor. That's what I'm hearing out there. Anyone else? Yeah, hard to find them.
Those before COVID.
They're booked.
Yeah. Okay, any announcements from anyone? No public here, so there will no, not be any public comment. And additional comments by planning commissioners? Linda, I'll start with you.
I don't have anything, thank you.
Bethany?
Um, I just wanted to say there was one meeting in April I won't be able to make. What day was it?
Uh, the thirteenth of February.
February?
Uh, April.
Okay, I was like, is that what I wrote? Um, yeah, I have a work obligation.
And Linda's not going to be at that one either?
No, I'm not going to be at the next one.
At the next one.
So the next meeting, if you.
I'm giving you two.
Yeah, you're giving us a two, two-meeting lead.
Yeah.
Um, next meeting is on the twenty-third, if we need it. Uh, right now, we don't have anything, so.
Yeah.
Maybe stay tuned, we might cancel one and then roll into, um, April, not February.
Jason's going to February.
Steve?
Uh, nothing, thanks.
And I haven't done anything either, so. You need adjourned.
Do you guys, okay, now that we're adjourned.
So turn up that.
Stop that thing. Stop that.